You are at the forum. Okay, we have nine members present. Mr. Wax, if you could please report to the council
Burnson, Chick, Fuhrer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Furnish, Wax, Walters, Faro. Ten members present in the corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles. I'm Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant President Pro Tem, serving as Presiding Officer Day in the absence of Council President Ferraro and Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter. There are 15 council districts in the city. We are currently being broadcast live via council TV, Channel 35. The program will repeat this evening at 7:30 and all council meetings will be repeated beginning Sunday at 10:00 a.m. First order of business.
Approval of the amendments.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, item number 20 requests that matter be continued till March 15th.
Without objection, so ordered.
Item 33, closed session item, request this matter be continued until January 18th.
Without objection, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, item number 17 is commission appointment Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey to the Commission on Children, Youth and Their Families.
Ms. McCroskey, are you with us here this morning? Would you please come forward and take a seat at the center table here? Colleagues, this is item number 17, a confirmation of a city official, Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey, to the Commission for Children, Youth and Their Families. Does any member of the council have any questions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I'd like to move unanimous approval. Ms. McCroskey was a former professor of mine, still a professor at USC School of Social Work, and just from the basis on which I knew her then and her dedication to making the future of children and their families better, I think this is a wonderful appointment and a great addition to have her expertise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else wish to speak on this appointment?
Mr. President, in spite of disclosure that she was Miss Chick's professor, I'd like to second that motion as the Chair of the Head Heart Committee for Children, Youth and Their Families.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. McCroskey, part of the council, taking a vote. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you.
Very well. Very good. Let us open the roll on this commission appointment and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, ma'am. Forthwith to the mayor. Next item.
Mr. President, item number seven, a request that matter be continued until January 18th.
Without objection, item number seven will be continued until January 18th. So ordered.
On the regular agenda, item number 17 is commission appointment Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey to the Commission on Children, Youth and Their Families.
Ms. McCroskey, are you with us here this morning? Would you please come forward and take a seat at the center table here? Colleagues, this is item number 17, a confirmation of a city official, Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey, to the Commission for Children, Youth and Their Families. Does any member of the council have any questions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I'd like to move unanimous approval. Ms. McCroskey was a former professor of mine, still a professor at USC School of Social Work, and just from the basis on which I knew her then and her dedication to making the future of children and their families better, I think this is a wonderful appointment and a great addition to have her expertise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else wish to speak on this appointment?
Mr. President, in spite of disclosure that she was Miss Chick's professor, I'd like to second that motion as the Chair of the Head Heart Committee for Children, Youth and Their Families.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. McCroskey, part of the council, taking a vote. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you.
Very well. Very good. Let us open the roll on this commission appointment and tabulate the vote.
On the regular agenda, item number 17 is commission appointment Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey to the Commission on Children, Youth and Their Families.
Ms. McCroskey, are you with us here this morning? Would you please come forward and take a seat at the center table here? Colleagues, this is item number 17, a confirmation of a city official, Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey, to the Commission for Children, Youth and Their Families. Does any member of the council have any questions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I'd like to move unanimous approval. Ms. McCroskey was a former professor of mine, still a professor at USC School of Social Work, and just from the basis on which I knew her then and her dedication to making the future of children and their families better, I think this is a wonderful appointment and a great addition to have her expertise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else wish to speak on this appointment?
Mr. President, in spite of disclosure that she was Miss Chick's professor, I'd like to second that motion as the Chair of the Head Heart Committee for Children, Youth and Their Families.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. McCroskey, part of the council, taking a vote. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you.
Very well. Very good. Let us open the roll on this commission appointment and tabulate the vote.
On the regular agenda, item number 17 is commission appointment Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey to the Commission on Children, Youth and Their Families.
Ms. McCroskey, are you with us here this morning? Would you please come forward and take a seat at the center table here? Colleagues, this is item number 17, a confirmation of a city official, Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey, to the Commission for Children, Youth and Their Families. Does any member of the council have any questions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I'd like to move unanimous approval. Ms. McCroskey was a former professor of mine, still a professor at USC School of Social Work, and just from the basis on which I knew her then and her dedication to making the future of children and their families better, I think this is a wonderful appointment and a great addition to have her expertise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else wish to speak on this appointment?
Mr. President, in spite of disclosure that she was Miss Chick's professor, I'd like to second that motion as the Chair of the Head Heart Committee for Children, Youth and Their Families.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. McCroskey, part of the council, taking a vote. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you.
Very well. Very good. Let us open the roll on this commission appointment and tabulate the vote.
On the regular agenda, item number 17 is commission appointment Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey to the Commission on Children, Youth and Their Families.
Ms. McCroskey, are you with us here this morning? Would you please come forward and take a seat at the center table here? Colleagues, this is item number 17, a confirmation of a city official, Ms. Jacqueline McCroskey, to the Commission for Children, Youth and Their Families. Does any member of the council have any questions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I'd like to move unanimous approval. Ms. McCroskey was a former professor of mine, still a professor at USC School of Social Work, and just from the basis on which I knew her then and her dedication to making the future of children and their families better, I think this is a wonderful appointment and a great addition to have her expertise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else wish to speak on this appointment?
Mr. President, in spite of disclosure that she was Miss Chick's professor, I'd like to second that motion as the Chair of the Head Heart Committee for Children, Youth and Their Families.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. McCroskey, part of the council, taking a vote. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you.
Very well. Very good. Let us open the roll on this commission appointment and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, ma'am. Forthwith to the mayor. Next item.
Mr. President, item number seven, a request that matter be continued until January 18th.
Without objection, item number seven will be continued until January 18th. So ordered.
On the regular agenda, item number one is a public hearing item.
Okay, item number one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the regular agenda, item number one? Okay, seeing none. I believe we need a motion on this item. Mr. Fuhrer moves. Ms. Walters seconds on this item. Open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, next.
Items number two through 16, with the exception of number seven on the regular agenda, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Excuse me, Mr. Chick.
Motion is required on item number three. There's two reports on one file.
There's been a request to continue item two. My understanding that the ordinance from the planning department is not ready yet for two weeks.
Okay, there's a request by the city attorney to continue item number two for two weeks, which would be the 28th of January. Is there any objection? Okay, without any objection, item number two will be continued two weeks. And now what items do we have before us, Mr. Clerk?
Items number three through 16, with the exception of seven, which has been continued.
And I believe we have a motion by Mr. Fuhrer to move item 3A. Are there any specials on any of those items, colleagues?
Mr. President, item number four, please.
Item four is called special. Item 15 is called special. Okay, are there any other specials? Mr. Fuhrer moves item 3A for number three. Okay, if there are no other specials and no council member wishes to speak, open up the roll on those items. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next.
The ordinance will be held over on that matter until next Friday.
Ordinance continued until next Friday, one week.
Fourthwith on number 16.
We're rolling here, folks.
Items number 18 through 29 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
We have numbers 18 through 29 before us.
With the exceptions of 20 and 21 which have been continued.
With the exceptions of 20 or 21 that have been continued, are there any specials? 28 special?
Just a minor amendment on item 26 to add the AQMD and relevant agencies to make the report.
Okay, without objection, that will be part of item number 26, amending by Mr. Fuhrer. Does anyone would like to speak on items number 18 to 29, Mr. Clerk? Was that correct?
18 through 29, with the exception of 20 and 21.
Okay, any specials? Any colleagues would like to speak on any of those items? If not, open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Forthwith on 25. Okay, next, Mr. Clerk?
Item number four called special. Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla, item number four.
Request a one-week continuance on that item.
Without objection, Mr. Padilla requests a one-week continuance on item number four and without objection, that'll be the order. Next item.
Item number 15 called special by councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, is there someone from staff here? I thought there was also a motion that was going to be circulated by Mr. Ridley Thomas, but...
Mr. Hernandez, could we possibly hold this on the desk?
On the C.R.E. issue, okay.
Okay. We're going to hold item 15 on the desk for a moment. And next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 28 called special by councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick, item number 28 called special?
Yes, thank you. And actually, Mr. President, this is subject for your committee, Transportation Committee, councilmembers of Ornich. As we all know, Governor Gray Davis announced that he and his appointees and staff and legislature are going to be taking a look throughout the state at what local governments and entities have or have not spent the allocated state transportation dollars. That translates into millions and millions of dollars for the City of Los Angeles, the County of Los Angeles, the money that we get from Sacramento. This motion asks for a clarification and verification that any state federal transportation dollars that have been allocated to the City of Los Angeles have either been expended or have been spoken for. Not only do we not want to lose dollars, but we want to be assured that they're being spent expeditiously. We certainly know we have gaping needs in our transportation system, so I'm happy to pass that role to you, Mr. Savornich, on our behalf and eagerly look forward to being reassured that our dollars are all in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chick. We now have item 28 before us. Is there any other council member that would like to speak on item number 28? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, Mrs. Chick?
Please.
Forthwith. Okay. The next items that we do have is item number 15, which remains on the desk, and then closed session items. So at this time, we would like to begin presentations by council members and then we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda. At this time, the chair recognizes Mr. Fuhrer for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm actually very honored to have the opportunity to make a presentation that is a tough one for us in the city to deal with, but a good thing, I think, from the standpoint of our friend Rick Sessinghaus. Many of us have known Rick. He has been in the city's service for 25 years, right?
Thirty.
Thirty years, excuse me.
Seems like 25 when you're having fun.
I came to know Rick most closely from his work in Wreckin' Parks when I had the opportunity to chair the Arts, Health and Humanities Committee. And through that experience, I have to say, you know, Rick was the interim general manager when I was the chair. I got to say that he was incredibly responsive and really committed to the kids of our city. A lot of complicated issues came up during Rick's tenure as interim general manager. Issues like gender equity in our parks. Rick responded with the Raise the Bar program, assuring that girls in the City of Los Angeles can have equal access to recreational opportunities throughout the City of Los Angeles. The issue of lead paint in parks came up, and Wreckin' Park facility is not limited to parks, but also daycare centers and elsewhere. And Rick rose to the challenge of assuring that our kids could be safe. We proposed that we create the city's first park where disabled kids could play, with able-bodied kids, without help. And again, Rick rose to the challenge to assure that all kids throughout the City of Los Angeles can have the opportunity to play. Throughout all his work, and certainly from my experience working directly with Rick, he always approached his job with a depth of commitment that is rare anywhere, and with a feeling for the people who would be affected by his work that makes him an extraordinary person. The ambivalence all of us feel at presentations like this is that Rick is choosing to retire, which is tough for us in Wreckin' Parks to deal with because he has been such an important and key figure, not only as interim general manager, but working closely with Ellie Oppenheim when she became the permanent general manager. And it is my pleasure, with some regret, only because you actually are leaving, to recognize Rick's achievements as a leader of Wreckin' Parks, but also as I've come to know Rick as a person. He's a quality guy. He's a quality guy and will be very, very deeply missed. And I give you Rick Sessinghaus.
Rick, before you begin, there are some council members that would like to say a few words. The chair recognizes Councilman Wax. I just don't want to let this opportunity to go by without me at least briefly expressing my admiration and respect for the job that you've done, not only as a professional within the department, but for your integrity, for your ability to somehow, you know, take a lot of abuse at times from a lot of people, some of us in this room, others on your commission, others in other... But to always have the integrity to tell the truth, to stand by your convictions, to give your best professional judgment, and to be a true professional. And that's something that's very meaningful to us, who have to weigh a lot of factors in making our decisions, to have, at least when someone speaks, to know that they are speaking exactly how they feel and exactly how they see it. And that, I think, has been an invaluable contribution to the process in the many, many years in which you've participated in. So I want to wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Miss Akowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to compliment Rick, not only on his whole career, but I think particularly the last part of his career. Very often when we have an acting or an interim director, it's essentially a caretaker, without decisions, without momentum, without fluidity being provided to the department. And that was not the case here. You did that. You provided momentum in the department, which was handling an awful lot, as we know, with Prop K, looking at new building projects, looking at creating park advisory boards. And you handled that masterfully with really creating a sense of direction, a sense of motion, and today I think the department reflects that. So I particularly enjoyed your experience there as the director and for what you did and helped setting the course. So I wanted to thank you personally for that because I think it was a great job.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I also personally wanted to compliment Rick on his very hard work on behalf of the city. I think that it needs to be said that you truly are one of the good guys of city government. The work that you have done has been very commendable, and I have been very honored to have worked with you because truly you knew how to get the job done, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. You truly deserve it, my friend. Rick, go right ahead.
I'd just like to briefly thank the council for the opportunity to serve with you and your very competent staffs, who some of are here today that I've touched base with over the years. It's been a pleasure, as well as working with other operating departments of the city. I would like to emphasize my commitment to the people of the Department of Recreation and Parks, the staff members there who are so dedicated every day, serving the public in so many positive ways. Those are the reasons, if any, that I have for my successes over the years. It was my distinct honor to be their general manager for a short period of time, but it was also certainly a pleasure to serve with them for 30 years, and I thank them for that. I would also like to say that I won't have an opportunity again to come before councils I have had for many years. In the spring of the year, when you're doing your budget deliberations, and I've been able to convince you so often of all the fine things that Recreation and Parks should be funded for, but I do want to say that this coming spring, please keep in mind that with Ellie Oppenheim's leadership, you can be assured that any amount of money that comes forward to the Department of Recreation and Parks will be money well spent. And so I hope you keep that in mind in the future.
Good lobbying.
Yes, thank you. Finally, I do want to introduce and acknowledge my family, who has been behind me for so many years in this life that I've created, and introduce them briefly to you if I could. First of all, my son Rick and his wife Kathy are expecting our first grandchild in a couple of months. We're very excited about that.
Thank you.
My son Steve. And obviously, finally, my wife Sandy of 30 years, who's been by me since I started in this business. So thanks once again. It's been a pleasure, and I will miss much of what happens here. Thank you. Not all.
Thank you, President. Again, Rick, congratulations and good luck, and Godspeed from all of us. Next, we would like to recognize Mr. Holden for a presentation. Mr. Holden, do you have a presentation this morning? Okay, we'll hold for a moment. Mr. Wax, I believe, do you have a presentation?
Sort of waiting for Ms. Goldberg, but I don't think she'll be here till 11:00. So how's our schedule?
We can go back to the agenda for a little while if you wish. We have one item, then we have closed session.
Well, I want to do this before we go into closed session. Let's hold this on the table for a moment, see if Ms. Goldberg arrives, and if not, we'll go on, we'll do this. But I want to do it before we go into closed session, Mr. Clerk.
That would be fine. Let us go back to the regular agenda then for a moment, colleagues. Mr. Clerk, what is the next item on the agenda?
Item number 15 called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, we do have, colleagues, we are back on the regular agenda. We have item number 15.
Yeah. We were waiting someone from personnel to come down, and I know Mr. Charlotte is here. I don't have a problem with...
Okay, has personnel arrived as of yet? Because if not, what we are going to have to do is...
I'm willing to put my questions on the table.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez, we can go to public comment for a moment until personnel arrives, if you would like.
Okay, okay.
Okay, why don't we do that? Let us hold item 15 on the desk and go to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on public comment because I have no cards? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. What we are going to do is to recess for five minutes in anticipation of personnel to arrive, because if we go into the closed sessions, we will have to clear the room in order to discuss the remaining items on the agenda. So why don't we take a few-minute break in anticipation of Personnel Department arriving? Council colleagues, please do not go anywhere. Okay, council colleagues, we do have a special council agenda this morning also, which are, which is a closed-session item. However, we do have two speakers' cards for the closed session. So at this time, what I'm going to do is to recess the regular council committee meeting, and we are going to call the special meeting to order in order to give opportunity for the individuals to speak on the item to which we will address in closed session. So, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll on the special council meeting?
Bernson, Chik, Fuhr, Glanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Akowski, Pajeco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Florence Wax, Walters, Faro, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We do have one item before us, which is a closed-session item, which we will discuss a little later. However, I do have two speakers' cards on closed-session item number one. They are Dan D. Pasquale, I hope I pronounced that right, and David E. Bush. Mr. Pasquale, if you would like to speak, you're welcome to, sir.
Hello, my name is Dan D. Pasquale. I'm a resident of Los Angeles, and I'm a member of the organization Food Not Bombs. I was arrested on December 19th for serving food to the homeless and participating in free speech activities in Pershing Square Park. The closed-session item that you're going to vote on today is an item, is the result of a negotiation between us and Recreation and Parks and the city's attorney office. And we came to agreement and gave a lot of concessions on our part for this two-week agreement to serve where they want us, well, an agreeable place for us to serve. One thing that I think is very important when you guys go in to vote on this closed-session item is that one part of this that we did not agree on between the city attorney and us is that if there will be language in there prohibiting us from being arrested for speaking freely in the park, serving food in the front of the park, distributing leaflets, and holding signs and banners, all perfectly legal activities. Unfortunately, we were arrested for these perfectly legal activities earlier, so we don't trust just saying we can do it. We want assurance that we won't be arrested. And the judge has indicated that if we don't go into this consented agreement where you agree to do this, another temporary restraining order will be issued against the city anyway. So we strongly encourage you to vote yea on the language guaranteeing us not to be arrested for these specific activities. We don't want a free ticket, but we think these activities are important.
Thank you, sir. Mr. David Bush? Mr. Bush, go right ahead, sir.
It's a privilege to speak before the city council today on this matter. I also am one of the people that was caught up in this unfortunate experience of being arrested in a city park for feeding people, for demonstrating and leafleting. And it's brought about the unfortunate experience of a federal judge having to order a temporary restraining order against the city. And he's asked us to mediate this out together, a meeting which we had last Wednesday. And we believe that we have a great agreement that deserves the city's approval over this unfortunate incident. So I would just like to thank you for your time today, and do ask and urge you to enter into, recommend to the judge that you will, that we do have an agreement. I think it'd be great for all of us.
Thank you, sir, very much. Colleagues, this is a closed-session item, which we are not prepared to take up right at this moment. So we are going to recess the special meeting. We are going to go back to the regular agenda, and what is before us is presentations. Because of time constraints and our possibility of losing a quorum in very short order, I am going to have to call on Mr. Wax on this time. Mr. Wax, with your indulgence, I know the Councilwoman Goldberg wanted to be part of this presentation also, but I believe we're going to run out of time. So with due respect to her, Mr. Wax, at this time, I call on you for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I have with me today five really remarkable women. Jacqueline Welter, Nancy Cohen, Stephanie Small, Constance Kaplan, and Dorothy Burnt, who, along with Jacqueline's life partner, Wendy Sukman, who passed away from cancer, have founded, and it really, all six were the founders, because while Wendy was alive, she was, I believe, the inspiration for a remarkable new group called Wendy's Hope. Wendy's Hope, reaching out to lesbians with cancer and other life-threatening diseases, is a new auxiliary of the City of Hope, one of the remarkable research and treatment institutions in the world. And as I learned about Wendy's Hope, it seemed to be such a perfect example of people being able to take a very difficult and tragic loss and turn it into something beautiful and life-giving. And in this case, through the experience that Wendy, Wendy's own experience, and her loved ones and friends who are with her today, they took that experience and founded Wendy's Hope, so that so many women, so many lesbians who have particular needs that have not often been considered, needs for sensitive medical training, medical personnel, for lawyers, for clergy, who have a sensitivity to and an understanding of the particular issues that these women face, have banded together, along with the City of Hope, to create this remarkable new organization. And I wanted the people themselves to come forward today to tell their story as to how this came about and what they hope to accomplish. But I wanted to say, on behalf of all of us here, that we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, on behalf of all of the people's lives that you will touch in the future, for your courage and your vision and your wisdom in creating Wendy's Hope. So in a moment, I will present a resolution to Wendy's Hope, to Jacqueline on behalf of Wendy's Hope, to each of the five founders, and a special plaque, a special plaque to the City of Hope for its partnership in this. But let me call on, at this time, ask you to, introduce you to Jacqueline Welter, who is the surviving life partner of Wendy Sukman. Jacqueline?
Hi, I'm Jackie Welter, and I first want to thank the council, especially Councilmember Joel Wax and Jackie Goldberg, for honoring Wendy's Hope and for honoring Wendy. We began, four of us, in a healing service, to heal one of us. And the three of us, the other three were, of course, myself, and Stephanie Small, and Connie Kaplan, and of course Wendy. Wendy never ceased to encourage us, that there were people who were much worse off than she was, and that we should look beyond all of that, and we should look to the time when she would be cancer-free, and we can do something for these lesbians who have no family, no people to help them. She was a truly miraculous woman, and for those of you who did not have the opportunity to know her, you really missed the boat. But anyway, here we are, and she most times would tell me what to do, and she's still telling me what to do. So the day that she died, we decided that we would carry on her dream. It has been very difficult for me to continue at some points, but we are here and we're doing it. Dorothy Burnt is another woman who spent every single Friday with her to help her through the myriad of emotional things that would happen during the time that she was ill. She had family pressures. She had all kinds of extraordinary things that lesbians do face, as well as discrimination in the medical community. Along the way, Nancy Cohen joined us and introduced us to the City of Hope. After many negotiations, Wendy's Hope, reaching out to lesbians with cancer and other life-threatening illnesses, an auxiliary of the City of Hope was born. I want to thank all the folks who have worked tirelessly to create Cindy's Hope, Tony Pogue from the City of Hope, and of course Stuart Rogoff, who would not let the ball drop what I gave up and would say, "I'll get them to agree, I'll get them to agree." And they did. And they have come out with us, and they stand beside us. We will get the research that we need. We will get support for people who have none. We will get all, we will get groups for lesbians with their caretakers. No one should have to be a sister, or a mother, or a relative of some sort to be with her lover when her lover is ill. I will miss Wendy every single day of my life, but I know that her courage and spirit live through us. And for those of us who will continue her vision, I thank all of them, and I thank you for honoring us and recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Let me also call for a moment, I want to introduce to you someone who's been... Let me also call for a moment, I want to introduce to you someone who's been a remarkable life force in our community, who brought this to my attention, Nancy Cohen.
Thank you, Joel. We have finally made it to the 21st century. The lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered community still faces discrimination in healthcare, employment, the freedom to marry, and so many other areas. The city of Los Angeles has been on the forefront of establishing much-needed policies for our community. I am so proud to be here today in Los Angeles as one of the honored founders of Wendy's Hope. Los Angeles is one of the most progressive and innovative cities in the world. The Los Angeles City Council recognizes the importance of lesbians having the basic right not to face discrimination from their medical providers, caregivers, and families while facing any and all illnesses. The joint collaboration of Wendy's Hope with City of Hope will serve as a role model for other medical facilities around the world to recognize the extreme necessity for services to be provided for our communities. I would like to thank the honorable city council members for their honor, this honor. And I want to extend my appreciation to councilmembers Joel Wax and Jackie Goldberg for sponsoring the resolutions. And a special thanks to Paul Newman for his collaboration in coordinating this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And before I introduce the last speaker, Stuart Rogoff, who will represent the City of Hope and the Beckman Research Institute, which are the partners in this. Members of council, just let me briefly say that sometimes people ask, "What is the fight all about? What is this sort of so-called equal rights fight all about?" And it's really about people being able to have the love and care that you have given Wendy and will give others without having to fight for it or beg for it, but to have it be a part of one's life experience. This is what it really is all about, to enable everyone to have this as a part of their life when that situation arises. Let me introduce to you Stuart Rogoff from the City of Hope, without whom this could not be possible. Stuart?
Thank you very much. Good morning. Today represents a historical and significant moment in time of promise, of accomplishment, of a dream becoming a reality, of pride, and of hope. City of Hope National Medical Center and Beckman Research Institute have always been on the cutting edge in medical research and compassionate care, ready to make a difference. For over 86 years, City of Hope has been a leader in medical discoveries and treatments that are now used worldwide in cancer and diabetes. These include synthetic human insulin for diabetics called Humulin, and bone marrow transplantation that was pioneered and perfected at City of Hope and now used worldwide. City of Hope has from the start been a volunteer-based organization, and today, we are proud to receive this recognition of our newest auxiliary, Wendy's Hope, reaching out to lesbians with cancer and other life-threatening diseases. Through over 300 groups nationwide, such as Wendy's Hope, we continue to provide community outreach, health education, and support, while at the same time providing opportunities for individuals to become involved with City of Hope as volunteers and financial supporters. We'd like to thank the Los Angeles City Council. We'd like to thank Joel Wax, Jackie Goldberg, and the municipal leadership for this recognition and support. This is a meaningful, very meaningful tribute to Wendy Sukman, for whom the group is named. Tonight, this group will have their charter signing celebration in West LA. And tomorrow, the Wendy's Hope group hits the ground running with a fantastic inaugural fundraiser, "Hope Is In The Ear," featuring Grammy Award-nominated songwriter Alan Rich. Finally, we congratulate, and I offer my personal congratulations, to the Wendy's partners and founders, and especially the group's president, Jacqueline Welter, along with Dorothy Brent, Nancy Cohen, Constance Kaplan, Stephanie Small. Together with Wendy's Hope, we begin a new millennium of miracles, and we like to thank Los Angeles for this recognition today.
Thank you. And let me just, at this time, present to, Jackie, if you'd come forward and accept this on behalf of all of the founders, present it to Wendy, to Wendy's Hope, from a very grateful city and the people on behalf whom your life, going to make life better for. And let me present this to you. I have one for each of the founders. I have a plaque for the City of Hope. I think we'll present that perhaps tonight at the charter signing. So thank you, members of council, for your patience and your understanding, and we'll, maybe Jackie will get it for the pictures.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wax. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation.
Mr. President, members, we're pleased, we should pat ourselves on the back because we've afforded some minority businesses to get a head start and become successful, and to really provide services for some of the major aerospace industries in Southern California. And that really means the country in thorough. We have Mr. Stephen McGlover. We're going to bring him forward, Mr. President. He's deserving of honors from the city council for a job well done for all of us. Mr. McGlover is the president of Oasis Office Products, Inc. He was just awarded a, an award from the Boeing Company's Reusable Space Systems Exceptional Company Performance Award. And that really means that for a minority small business, he has the highest ranking, performed the very best for the aerospace industry, and so have received the award. He's also been appointed the new president of the Minority Business Association, Black Business Association, chairman of the Black Business Association. He's a busy person. You know what they say, that if you want to get a job done on time and below cost, you're not overrun, are you? No cost overrun? Get a busy guy to do it. And Mr. McGlover is such a person. So it's indeed my pleasure, Mr. President, to present this certificate of congratulations to Mr. Stephen McGlover for a job well done. And we're very proud of you. Our community is proud of you. The whole city is. Just this morning, he was at the Labor Breakfast. They were commemorating the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King, and the Secretary of Transportation was here as well, is that correct?
Exactly.
All right, and others. So...
I want to thank Councilman Nate Holden for the commendation, and all of you for the support of small business. I do not want us to think for one minute that your work is just done for nothing. I think that our commitment to small and disadvantaged business is at the forefront of our lives' hope for our children. And if we don't start working to recognize that it's time for us to give back, so therefore they're prepared for the future, then we'll all be lost. And I thank you very much for this opportunity. It is not easy, but I ask the city council, continue, look at the contracts that you're writing. I hope that RFPs can come into play, so therefore some of the things that you would like to have done can be done in a proposal, so therefore that some of our subcontractors can partner with some of the large contractors, and we can do business together, because each one reaches one. And no man is an island, no man stands alone. This country is ran by small business, whether you recognize it or not. And I thank you right now for all that you've done. I'm also Reverend Stephen McGlover, and my father was at the Free Will Missionary Baptist Church, and he was the founder for 47 years.
Where is that church located?
You know where it is.
Talk to us.
8323 South Figueroa.
What council district?
Yours, Doc.
Thank you. Thank you, Doc.
God bless you.
Mr. President, Mr. Holden, I want to join and commend Mr. McGlover for his work as an entrepreneur, and one who is demonstrating what can be done by self-determination, drive, and creativity. And so we commend you and wish you well in growth and expansion in your business endeavors. Thank you so much.
And thank you very much.
Mr. Hernandez, did you want to?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Holden, and congratulations, sir. Okay, next item. I believe we are concluded with presentations at this time. Next item?
Councilmember's excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Miss Kowski requests to be excused on Tuesday, February 22nd, to leave at 11:30.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused on January 18th, arrive at 11 o'clock. February 22nd, February 23rd, February 29th, March 1st, and March 7th for personal business meets policy.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And Councilmember Subornich requests to be excused on Tuesday, February 9th for personal business, and Tuesday, February 1st, and Friday, February 18th, to leave at 11 a.m., and Friday, February 4th, to leave at 11 a.m. for city business meets policy.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Motions for posting a referral?
Okay, that'll be the order. Now we have, colleagues, we find ourselves in the, in the absence of time here, two issues before us. We have number, item number 15, which is before us, plus we have three closed session items. I have been advised by the CLA that one of the closed session items is very important, and that is the closed session item on the special agenda that we need to address. And so at this time, what I'm going to ask is that we're going to go into a quick closed session to address that issue at the request of the CLA, and then we are going to come back and deal with item number 15. And if we have any more time, we'll deal with the rest of the closed session items. So at this time, we're going to be going into executive session. Those who have an interest in item number 15, don't go too far, but we are going to have to clear the council chambers to deal with the closed session item, special item number one. We're going to announce the results of the closed session first, and then we'll recognize you, councilwoman. Mr. Clerk?
The results of the special meeting on item number one was to approve the interim agreement, the agreement and proposed order in lieu of the temporary restraining order.
Okay, and that item was approved.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg for reconsideration on item number 18.
Yes, I'd just like to ask for reconsideration so I can be recorded as an aye vote.
Okay, without objection, the item is before us. Can we please open the roll on item number 18 again? And tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much.
That item is approved. We do have 12 members, colleagues, and there are some ordinances that we continued. The clerk has informed me that we can reconsider the ordinances at this time, since we have 12 votes and dispense with them at this time. So at this time, the ordinances that were before the council this morning?
Numbers four, 18, and 19.
Okay, items four, 18, and 19. Is there any council colleagues that would like to discuss those items as those items are now reconsidered and are before us? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on these ordinances and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved, forthwith on those items. We now have item number 15 before us. Council colleagues, those of you who wish to speak on item number 15, would you please push your buttons again?
Item 15.
15 is the appointment of Mr. Sharlin. Mr. Sharlin?
He's due to arrive back in. I believe we have some speakers cards on these two items, and we'll just hold for a moment.
Mr. Hernandez, I believe that you had asked Personnel Department to arrive, to your knowledge, have they?
I just saw him walk in the door right now.
Okay.
I'll also ask Mr. Deaton if he'll go up to the table. He didn't know I was going to ask that question.
Okay, we have the Personnel Department arriving, Mr. Deaton, and then also we're waiting for Mr. Sharlin.
And I think Ms. Moore is present, who's the president of the commission.
Would you like Ms. Moore also, Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, she should come up.
Okay. Commissioner Moore, if you could please join us at the, one of the center tables, and upon the arrival of Mr. Sharlin, we will ask him to join us there also, as well as Mr. Deaton. Once everyone is in place, I'm going to call on Councilman Pacheco first, as chairman of the HCR committee, to be recognized, and then we will proceed with Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Goldberg, and Mr. Ridley Thomas. So we'll just hold a minute, colleagues, for Mr. Sharlin to arrive.
He's going through the mental detectors.
Before we start, do I have a point of personal privilege to give the certificate that I was late in giving?
Yes, councilwoman.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Then we can have the debate uninterrupted.
As we begin to put everyone in place on this item, the chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Goldberg for a quick presentation.
Mr. President, colleagues, member of the public, I do apologize for having been just a little late this morning and therefore not being here on time. But to my right is a man whose official name is Amagor Chavez, but we all know him as Max, who is a pillar, literally a pillar, in the labor movement of Southern California and actually of the nation. And unbelievably, he's retiring. No one can actually imagine what I am is going to be like without him, at least I can't anyway, because his leadership has been so critical for a great many years, I won't even mention how many, but he's been doing this a very long time, and has served, really began his career with the local lodge 331, California tool and die makers, as an apprentice in 1957. He's learned the inner workings of labor and management while working as a shop steward for the Proto Tool Company Ingersoll Rand, a position he held for 12 years. He was on the union executive board as recording secretary and as district lodge delegate in too many numbers of years for me to even list them all. He served his union as secretary of marine shipbuilding and machine manufacturing committee, held every major office in District Lodge 94, whether it was secretary, treasurer, business rep, or directing business rep. He's been involved with the California Conference of Machinists, acting as its president. He's held the position of secretary of the machine manufacturing committee, the organizing committee, the education committee. Because of time, I'm not going to read all of this, but I just want to say to you that this man is a leader in every sense of the word, because in addition to being a labor leader, which is important enough, he's a leader in his community, he's a leader in his personal neighborhood, he's a leader in California, and he's a leader in this nation on behalf of the needs and rights of working men and women, of their human rights, of their civil rights, and of their rights as a working folks to be treated with dignity. And he treats everyone with the same dignity that he expects the people he represents to be treated with. And so, Max, I'm going to miss you, but I wanted to bring you here to make sure you knew how much we all love you, and this is signed by every member of this council. And I want to just say to you, thank you so much for a lifetime of service to the people of our communities.
Thank you, Jackie. To Councilwoman Jackie Goldberg and the rest of the city council, I want to express my greatest thanks for bestowing this honor on me, and I really appreciate it. I'm happy to be here. I've worked on many projects with Jim Woods over the years. I've worked on many projects with Jim Woods over the years with the city. Our office was under Loma for the last 35 years, and I do look forward to continuing to work with projects within the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations on behalf of all of us. Okay, we do have item number 15 now before us, and I am going to call on the Chair of the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee first, and then we will proceed with other council colleagues. So, the chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, at this time, actually, I wanted to, Councilmember Hernandez had asked for a presentation first, and I want to give the commission chair and staff an opportunity to give their presentation prior to making any comments out of deference to Councilmember Hernandez and give the staff an opportunity. Then I'll give my, my presentation in terms of what happened in committee.
Thank you, Councilman. If you'd like to push your button again, please, I'd appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
And before staff makes their presentation, I'd like to take, make sure I have the six minutes to come with being personally called special. Members of the council, I'm, I'm a little confused here because this item is before us, and we get to vote to authorize it. And the reason I say that is because it hadn't come before us in terms of this decision prior to this. You see, I know that the reason it's before us is because the charter gives us the authority to basically vote on this budget item. And for whatever reason, the previous time the CRA came and asked for this kind of authority, it was for a six-month contract. And the commission president, in bringing it to us, felt that that was the best solution for that agency, that we needed someone to come in and do some work in regards to turning the agency around, in regards to providing some clarity as to that budget and the project areas. And I have no questions that that's been happening. Now, it's been happening through the reports we've been receiving. But see, I need to ask Mr. Deaton, and I should ask the CAO, but the reality is, this recommendation that's before us, has your office reviewed it, Mr. Deaton?
We haven't, no.
No, you haven't. Have you reviewed the turnaround program that Mr. Sharlin has been discussing?
We have reviewed the budget, and we've reviewed the, actually, the budget submittal and had some recommendations that, some of that would come back. We had the recommendation relative to the audit of financials for the various areas, et cetera.
Don't take up my full six minutes here.
I won't.
I'm trying to get to the process here that's of my concern. See, my concern is, when we approved this contract, I understood why we were doing it, and there was a lot of discussion prior to that decision that went into the process. And that discussion basically included our participation. And we agreed to it. As part of that discussion, we also felt that there had to be a search for a new director, a permanent director for the agency. And we approved that expenditure. And for some reason, that search did not continue. That was suspended. Now, I don't remember approving that suspension. And that was bothersome to me, because I think we should have been part of that decision. Because the search has not happened. Now, what's before us is a recommendation to extend this contract so that the work that's been done continues. And again, I am not questioning that work, and I'm not questioning that extension. I'm questioning the process. Because we, as a city council, have the right to participate in that process and be part of it. We do not have to be on the sideline and only take it into account when we realize that we, the council, has to approve the budget expenditure. And see, that's what's happened here. Decisions were made without us participating, and now we're being asked to make another decision. Now, I am still dealing with the whole concept of consolidation of economic development, and it's something that we have to deal with on this council and bite the bullet. Either we're going to do it or we're not going to do it. And so, I'm watching this process very carefully as part of that consideration. We have a citizens committee that's been reviewing that issue. It's going to be reporting to this council as to whether we should do it. And so, my concerns are, you know, people tell me, well, if we extend this contract for two years, it'll allow a new mayor who, according to the new charter, is going to have the power to hire and fire anyway. I'm sitting there saying, if we're going to be making decisions based on whose mayor and their authority, and forget about the processes, then let's just say that publicly. If we're going to have process that include the CAO, that include the CLA as oversight people to make recommendations to this council, let's understand that. But this process basically excluded the CAO, excluded the CLA, and is brought before us in the last minute. And basically, we're left with very few choices. And our choices are to provide some kind of extension to the work that I'm not questioning, or not to do that. Or not to do that. And I needed to remind the chair that when you don't go through that process, our inclination is not to do that. Because we don't have a recommendation from the CLA, and we don't have a recommendation from the CAO. Now, laying that groundwork, I'm trying to compress this process to help you with this decision. And I need you to explain to us how you got to that decision, why it is that you suspended that contract, and again, why you didn't let us know, do the search, why you believe now you need this time to do it, and why you believe you need so much time for the search, so that we can take those factors into consideration in our decision. And that's why I called this item special, Mr. President. I just wanted all my colleagues to understand it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, would you like to respond at this time, or would you like to hear from a few more council members?
May I respond at this time? Would that be appropriate? And I do appreciate very much what you did have to say, Councilman Hernandez. And I understand the process thought. Let me tell you what we had done, and maybe that can help. Because it is absolutely, I mean, I will take the responsibility of how the thought process worked and share that with you. We did begin the search. We had a search firm. We selected the search firm. We were in the process of setting out the job description so that we could go out with an international, excuse me, with a national search. We were almost four months into the six months at that point in time. So, the question came up. We have a contract that is concluding in January. We have already gotten our numbers almost together and ready to present back to this council as we said we would do. We've started the restructuring. So, what happened was, in the process of our energies in trying to get what we committed to do forward, we felt at this point in time, because we were in the middle, it would be to the best benefit of the city as a whole to keep the energies moving. And that's why Jerry's plan, and then we met, and thought that the best process was to go forward with two years. It is absolutely, and I will take the responsibility, that my, my process of thinking was, how can we do the best job that we said we would do for you? And we didn't mean to circumvent any process at all.
Thank you, Commissioner. The chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Council President and colleagues, I want to discuss what we're doing here today, really in terms of what's in best interest of the agency. Because for me, the ultimate goal is to make sure that the agency is on solid ground. And when we do find a permanent administrator that receives, he or she receives an agency that is worth taking to the next level and really putting together the projects and removing blight in the city. One of the things you have to understand from my perspective that really gives me comfort and really solidifies my support for what I recommended and what was approved by the committee is the fact that many times when we talk about the administrator, the commission, and the city council, some individuals would like to attach to the administrator the responsibility of providing the vision and providing the sort of focus on the projects that are within our districts. I am of a different opinion. This is an opinion I shared while I was a charter reform commissioner, and I want to share with you. It is incumbent upon the commission to have the vision. It is incumbent upon the administrator to do the management and carry forward the vision of the commission. That's how I see the division of labor in our structure of government here. More importantly, though, I personally believe that it's incumbent upon the council member and their district to protect and move forward their own district. So, when we talk about a project like the Islandia East project, which is in my district, my vision is that, and my viewpoint is that, when Councilman Alatori drove that through with the support of the community and brought it to the commission, that it was a responsibility of Mr. Sharlin's predecessor to make it happen. It was not his responsibility to have the vision for the east side. And sometimes, when we look at the administrative position, we confuse that. We look for someone who's going to direct the CRA in a certain direction, which is based on them trying to understand the whole city. I am not of that opinion. I think the council member is really the focal point and brings it to the commission and moves us forward. The, the compromise in terms of what I brought forward is really based on the fact that I believe Mr. Sharlin is doing a good job, that Mr. Sharlin is not finished with his work and really needs the time period that we have outlined of a year. And then in the second year, he will be part of a transition team with the search being done. If people are complaining about process, the solution is process. And that's what the committee report provides, is a process in writing, exactly where we're going, why we're doing what we're doing. I think to undermine or to look at it in any other way or to criticize the process at this point is really a red herring. We are providing a process. You may not like the process, you may not think that it's the best process, but don't say there is no process. We are providing a process. What we really need to look at also is the fact that I do not believe the commission did this extension in the best way, but I am not going to penalize the agency for the commission's shortfalls. And I'm definitely not going to penalize Mr. Sharlin for that shortfall either. And the agency needs this type of leadership. We, I feel that the more solid we can get the agency, the better it is for a true administrator who comes from the school of CRAs or has its background in CRA. And this is what we're doing right now, putting it on solid ground. So, I ask that you support the committee report. I know there's an amendment floating around. I think the amendment would undermine not only Mr. Sharlin's efforts up to date, but would really jeopardize the future of the agency, and I ask that you not support the amendment.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg. Okay, the chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, may I ask, Mr. President, if there are persons to be heard by way of public hearing, and at what point that might be accommodated?
Yes, there are. There are two speakers that wish to be heard for public hearing.
Would it be the chair's sentiment that we should hear public comment and?
We'd be having to accommodate that request, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and we'll hold the time. Mr. Dave Cochran and Judy, is it Schwartz? Mr. Cochran, then followed by Ms. Schwartz.
David Cochran from AFSMI Council 36, representing AFSMI locals 164, 585, and 2204, and CRAMA, the CRA Management Association, the newest AFSMI affiliate. We are here today, and I'm going to make this absolutely clear. I know that wonderful things were said about Jerry Sharlin at the committee meeting. We are not here because we don't like Jerry Sharlin. We are here because we are concerned about the promises made by the CRA board to this council, to the public, and to our members. And those promises were not kept, that there would be a search for a, the best redevelopment leader possible. And it is our concern that this process, we think it's a very important process for the head of any city agency or department, that a public process take place, that a process take place that allows and invites qualified applicants to come and present reasons why they are the best people. And it just, just wasn't done. We are in support, and our members are in support of Councilmember Ridley Thomas's substitute motion because we believe that it best serves the people of this city. It best sends the proper and appropriate message to this city that there will be open processes for the selection of department heads. There will be public consideration from the public as to their needs. This, Mr. Sharlin was brought in as interim administrator because of concerns expressed by the board, that they wanted an open process, transparent process. And they turned around and they shut down that transparency. We need an open process. That is what we are about. That is what we are supporting. Mr. Ridley, Thomas's substitute motion is absolutely on point on this. We would ask for your support for that substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Judy Schwartz, followed by, there was another speaker, Levi Kingston. Mr. Kingston, you'll follow Ms. Schwartz.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Judy Schwartz, Director of Legislative Affairs for the Central City Association. I am here today to speak in favor of permanently appointing Mr. Sharlin to the position of administrator for the CRA. CCA believes that what the agency needs right now and for the next two years is strong financial leadership and internal stabilization. We are impressed with Mr. Sharlin's ability to create a clear and practical budget and to stabilize the agency financially. We also have great confidence in his management skills and that he will be successful in providing the agency with the leadership it needs. We have worked with Jerry and believe that he deserves a reasonable amount of time to restructure and stabilize the CRA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kingston? Levi Kingston? Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, this is Levi Kingston. I'm president, or I should say, I'm chairman of the board of an agency that was established by the CRA over 10 years ago in the form of a memorandum of understanding with CRA and CDD. We've been at that location, as a program, we've existed 23 years. CRA obviously has played a major role in the scheme of things, not only in just Los Angeles proper, but in South Central, and specifically in the eight councilmatic district. I also am not here to, I don't know Mr. Sharlin, unlike the speaker before me. I haven't worked with him, but that's not the point. I support the general notions that Councilman Hernandez made reference to, which is to acknowledge a process which includes a search for a new director of an agency that has obvious relevance to the community that I'm from. In addition to that, I'm supporting the substitute motion of Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas. I'm here today as, as a supporter of his, and on the eve of the Martin Luther King celebration, I want to make it clear that people like me, small agents, representatives of smaller agencies, are as concerned about process as anyone else.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ridley Thomas, at this time, would you like the remainder of your time?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I offer 15A in the spirit of causing the council to do what we thought was being asked of us some months ago when the request was made to appoint an interim administrator. It seems to me that a process that is open, that is fair, that is competitive, is in the best interest of the health of the agency, is in the best interest of the health of what we wish to see accomplished by way of redevelopment throughout the city of Los Angeles in those designated project areas. It is my view that there is no reason that has been offered that is acceptable to suspend a search process for the administrator of the largest redevelopment agency in the nation. All our processes typically call for open, fair competition. Interim appointments are certainly appropriate. And in this instance, I think it should be stated that an interim appointment was made of a person that hardly any of us knew. Many of us said, we realize that the work must proceed, and we still believe that. That's why the motion calls for an appointment of Mr. Sharlin on an interim basis for an additional six months with the potential of two, three-month extensions, should they be needed or deemed appropriate. I think it's critically important that we identify now that it is important to start with the issue of the search. with the issue of the search. There is no reason to delay that. We are not a body that should perpetuate double standards. Another search is underway now, for the airport, for an example. It is fully appropriate that a national search be in place in that instance, and I believe that that should go forward, and it has. I see no reason why such shouldn't be the case here. Six months is a good enough time to do the search. If it is not accomplished in that period of time, I would submit that it is appropriate to extend the interim appointment, as deemed appropriate and as specified in the motion, and I would simply appeal to all members of the council to seriously consider this and adopt it. It is in line with policy, it is in pursuit of what is fair, rather than putting us in the possession of blatantly perpetuating double standards here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Bernson.
Yes, members of the council. First of all, in all due respect to the agency, which we want to see succeed, the main concern should be the people of Los Angeles, and what the agency can do for them. And I think that ought to be our top priority. But let's face some realism here, okay? We now have a patronage-type government in Los Angeles, based upon the new charter, which goes into effect on July 1st. For those of you that don't know what a patronage government is, it means that the new mayor, whoever that may be, has the authority to remove the general manager and assistant general manager of every single department in the city, at his will or her will, whoever that may be. So I think we should bear that in mind, we think, in terms of going out for national searches. You know, we could go spend a lot of money and do a national search, and the new mayor says, "Well, you know, I don't like any of these, I'm going to appoint my campaign chair from over here, and that's going to be my general manager for this department, and my other supporter here is going to be my general manager for that department." And it's true that we do have to approve those. But I think we need to recognize these realities. This city council, and I was one of them, took a stand against some of these charter amendments, because we felt that this would create this type of government in Los Angeles. That's what we're looking at. And this is your first example of what's come home to roost now. Now, Mr. Sharlin, in my opinion, is a very capable manager, has done a good job so far. I think he should be given an opportunity. But the real question is what the length of time is. Now, six months, six months I don't think may be adequate. I might be willing to go for something that would extend through the period of time that the current mayor has to serve. That might be the compromise, in between the one year, the two years, and the six months, would be to give him the opportunity. As far as going out to a search, that's going to be something this council is going to have to make a decision on, and it should be acted on differently and separately from this extension. And the reason is because, no matter what you spend, depending on who the mayor may be, the search may be a waste of money and meaningless. And that, I hate to say this, but we lost. People who support it, who, the people who oppose the new charter, we lost, and we have to live with the consequences, and this is going to be one of the consequences. So get used to it.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. I have not totally kept track of how many general managers or heads of CRA have been in place, let's say, since 1993, between 93 and now? How many do we know?
I think just...
I can answer that. I believe we had Ed Avila at the beginning, and then I believe we had John Malloy. We had an interim of Keith Comrie while we were doing the search. So, 1, 2, 3, 4, in 6 years. So, you know, in terms of continuity and stability, I'm not sure that we have a very good track record, period. And, you know, when I look around at the city and other departments, it seems that we've got a city filled with important departments that are being run by interim general managers, some of them very long-term interim general managers. I just don't see how that's a good way to run anything. And it has been presented to me as one of the arguments why I should be supporting either the commission or Mr. Pacheco's committee, is because everybody knows that by the end of this year and a half or two-year term that's being suggested, we'll have a new mayor, and the new mayor is going to appoint the new CRA head anyway. Well, first of all, colleagues, I'm not sure that we are or should be basing any of our decisions about general managers on that, and I don't, are we taking that into consideration on every general manager we're appointing? I mean, we've got a personnel department where there was a general manager hired and left within a week, and we're going to have to do that again. Are we going to make sure that that person's only appointed as long as this term of the current mayor is running? We all also ought to remember who created this version that we have now of term limits. So, you know, I see problems with this, absolutely, in terms of general managers coming in and going out according to mayors. But I'd like to think the new mayor, whoever that person is, is going to look at the head of CRA and their performance for about a year, if we follow the alternative recommendation of Ridley Thomas, and if the person is good, to keep that person on. The final comment is, I'm bemused or puzzled by the statement I heard, that the head of the CRA is not the person who leads the agency, and kind of creates, in conjunction with the commission, and I would hope the council and the mayor, a vision. I don't see how we successfully turn the CRA around when we've got someone at the head who's not the person pushing on what the vision is. But in continuity, I'd like to know that we've got someone, and it could very well be Mr. Sharlin, in my opinion, I'm not dissatisfied in the least with the performance so far, but that we've got someone who's running that agency, who's going on into the future, just like this city is going on into the future, and just like all the projects that are going to be created and added, and the directions we're going in go on into the future, after this mayor and into the next. So whether I'm supporting exactly the alternative motion, or some hybrid version, I'm not comfortable with what has been presented by the commission or by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before I call on the next speaker, I need to send item 13 forthwith at the request of the CLA. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the CLA for a minute. Mr. Deaton.
Just like to clarify a point. The charter, neither the current one nor the future one, actually dictates what goes on at this agency relative to the council's powers relative to this particular position. There's an ordinance, actually, the CRA is a quasi-state organization, and in fact, the oversight ordinance dictates the terms and conditions upon approval of the general manager and the budget, et cetera, et cetera. So this will not change come July 1st. This ordinance stays, unless the ordinance changed, the role of the city council and the role of the mayor, et cetera, and the commission, et cetera, stays in place with this ordinance. So, just thought I'd...
Thank you, Mr. Deaton.
No.
The chair recognizes...
The CRA, this is not a general manager, this is an agency administrator under state law. The process by which the selection, et cetera, and the approval of the budget, et cetera, is all covered by the oversight ordinance, as opposed by the city charter.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very sad that we've come to this, and even more sad because of the reasons we have. I think the commission has overstepped its bounds. I think that the commission needs, I said this before, that this commission, as currently constituted, needs some re-education in the way that it takes action. And with this action here today, I don't see anything to change my mind about that. And I'm sorry that it is that way. I think that Mr. Sharlin, in the few opportunities that I've had since he's been here to interact with him, he impresses me as a very honest man, as very forthright, and very interested in putting this agency back on its feet. That's the upside. And the downside of it is, the action that the agency has taken out of all, in opposition, really, to all the policy actions that it's taken before, and the commission is supposed to be the policy setter for the agency. If the commission was going to change the policy by whereby the city appointed agency administrators or general managers, and there's been adequate precedent set for that, then they should have notified us and not left the council with the last words of the president of the commission, that they were going to appoint for six months and begin searching. If you found out after four months that you were satisfied and wanted to do something different, then you should have come back to council and let the council know that. Certainly to, even a phone call to members, or someone from the mayor's office, saying they supported it, and that they wanted to do X, Y, and Z. I think that, as I've said before, personally, I think Mr. Sharlin is a fine person, I think he's a smart individual, I think he's doing good work over there at the agency, and I've said that to him personally. And he has a horrible back, and I wish him well on that. But I am supporting the motion of Mr. Ridley Thomas here today, because of the precedent that has been established in the way that general managers or agency administrators are appointed. It has nothing to do with this particular individual, Mr. Sharlin. Mr. Ridley Thomas was quite right when he reminded us that the administrator at the airport, the deputy, who was the chief of staff, or deputy administrator, is now the interim general manager, interim administrator, while a search is going on. And that was said from the get-go by that commission, and they followed through on it. And I think what this commission indicated to the council at first, that we should stick to that and move forward. I don't think you can give advice to an agency on the policy, and establish policies, by whim.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And not notify other people. Thank you, Mr. Savory.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Missakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think a lot of good things have been said here, and I agree that I have been impressed with Mr. Sharlin and his first six months. And I, what I looked first to was this report that we did receive at the end of the year, which is the turnaround status report by Mr. Sharlin. And I think I was looking at this report and trying to make it make sense with either the action of the commission or the action of the committee. And what this report said was that the most important and the first priority of the department, or the agency, has been to outline a realignment of the agency personnel to begin to implement the major structural recommendations. This realignment will lead to improvement in agency's work processes and systems. And I think, members of the council, that has been our concern, is as Ms. Chick indicated, there have been four CRA administrators in the last six years, and if there's a problem that's been out there as a consequence of that, it is the management of that agency, it is the question of the personnel. We've also seen that same issue arise in terms of the budget, and what are our costs going to go to, and what are we doing? And until we get the agency in hand, we're not going to be able to move forward on a vision. And Mr. Sharlin also indicated in this report that this phase of the process will take nine to 12 months. Then he says concurrent with that, we will also need to do an exhaustive search on our portfolio of redevelopment projects, and really start to look at the vision. That is something that he was putting into the final phase, although it's going on generally concurrently. But I also agree with what Mr. Bernson said, I don't think that that turnaround process, dealing with alignment of staff and everything, can be done within six months. And so that's why I was a little concerned with the amending motion, so you just leave him in place for six months. I think Ms. Chick hit on it when she said maybe a hybrid makes sense. And I think I would feel most comfortable supporting the committee report if we didn't defer the nationwide search and the getting reports back to us for a second year. Essentially, the committee report says, leave Mr. Sharlin in place for a year, leave an option for a year's extension there, when we then begin the nationwide search. I don't think we can afford that nationwide search. I like the fact that Mr. Sharlin is there, I'd like Mr. Sharlin to be there for a year to do this work that's going to take nine to 12 months in the turnaround. But concurrent with that, I would like to initiate now the search, so that a year from now, we are looking at the results of that search with interim reports back to us, and then a decision on the part of the agency, and there may be an appropriate role, a duality role, in terms of a vision person, or a chief financial officer person, and an administrator person. But let the commission give us their best recommendation a year from now, rather than a year and a half or two years from now. So I think if that's, if I can sort of codify this, I think I would look at recommending, amending the committee report to say that the nationwide search not begin a year from now, but continue and begin with work that Ms. Moore indicated was done, up to four months, and then some cessation to that work occurred. But let's continue with that process now. I think, as we've seen before, when we do nationwide searches for high-level positions in this city, it sometimes involves more than six months, more than eight months, and we see a need, the ability to continue people in place. But let's start getting that information best. I don't believe it should be deferred until coincident with a new election for mayor, but let's get that on way. So we have the best of all information and resource available to us. So that is my motion.
President?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do we have a second to that motion?
Well, I wanted to...
Okay, what is your point, Ms. Chick?
I needed clarification and wanted to know if the amending motion for a year and start the search now, and only for a year, with the option to renew at the end of the year, or how do you...
The report for the options to renew after that is still in place, but it would say it doesn't defer that we begin the search a year from now, we begin the search now.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Would you envision that there would be nothing restricting Mr. Sharlin from being a candidate in that search? Yes.
Do we have a second for the Councilwoman's motion? Okay, Mr. Wax. Mr. Fuhr?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's clear from, pardon me, from the discussion so far, that we are still striving for consensus, a consensus that would allow the agency to move forward, establish some continuity, and at the same time, assure a process that gains a majority of the council. And I think that today, we don't have that yet. And I'm going to move to continue to Wednesday. I know that Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Hernandez, and others have had concerns about what happens with Mr. Sharlin's contract in the meantime, and there are motions that are appropriate for that. But I'll defer to Mr. Pacheco, who was the initiator of this, as the housing chair, to deal with the contract issue, but my motion is to continue to Wednesday.
Mr. Pacheco?
Is there a second for that motion?
Excuse me, the, this is the last day to act, so the council needs to take some action today, they can't defer everything.
That's why I defer to our colleague who chairs the housing committee.
We're getting there, Ms. Weingart.
I want to just make a motion to extend the contract for 30 days, to give us an opportunity to clarify these issues and come to some resolution. So I would move to extend the contract for 30 days only.
And then extend the contract for 30 days and continue this discussion until Tuesday?
Until Wednesday.
Until Wednesday?
Right.
Okay. That is the motion on the floor. Do we have a second to that?
A second.
Okay. Chair recognizes Mr. Wax.
I was going to add all of the above and none of the above, to try to figure out. Could I ask, Mr. Sharlin, would you feel comfortable, now that you've heard this whole array of suggestions on the table, to comment on them? I'd like to hear from you. I expressed Ms. Walters' point of view on her assessment of you. I told her I shared what she said about you, and I'd like to hear your comments on this whole range of alternatives that have now been presented.
Thank you. I'll try for a while, if I have to stand up, I will. Thank you.
You can't stand.
Okay, let me try. Okay, thank you. Does this work? Okay, okay. I do very much appreciate the struggle and the issue about the process. I'm supportive of the notion that we should have a full search. My particular concern comes from living inside this agency, and sort of the social fabric. The closer, the sooner you have the search, the more focus the employees will have on the, excuse me, on the leadership change, or potential change, rather than understanding that there's going to be some level of stability for some time, and that they need to go along with our programs. Sometimes it's hard to know when the magic time is, is it a year, is it, you know, 14 months? Is it, you know, 14 months? Is it 10 months? Those things, I, I, I don't think I can come to a defined, uh, decision on, but generally the, the sooner you bring it, the closer you bring it to, to the current time, the more difficult you make this process, I think. But otherwise, uh, you know, I will, if we can find some reasonable balance there, I think we oughta try to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Charlin. The chair recognizes Council President Proten, Ruth Galanter.
Let me start by saying, I, before I vote for a 30-day extension or a continuance, I wanna know how Mr. Charlin feels about that because we, we can't do it without your acquiescence, without inadvertently doing something totally different.
Um, no, I, I do wanna respect everyone here to go through the process, to think about it. Uh, I'm willing to do the 30 days. Um, I'm happy to-
Thank you.
-sit down and talk to anybody.
No, I know, and I appreciate your having called my office. I simply didn't have the time available.
Sure.
But I, I mean, I really don't want to, and I do have a lot of concerns about that.
I appreciate your time.
And I just don't want, before I vote for one of these things, I wanna know how the person most directly affected feels.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Let me just say, just so everybody knows, I, I do have, um, I have a lot of concerns, obviously, that we all share about the state in which our CRA finds itself at this moment, and I know that Peggy's been struggling with this for quite a while. But I also, I also should tell you, I have a lot of concerns about redevelopment law in the state of California and how redevelopment is used. It is one of the more, probably unnecessarily, but nevertheless extraordinarily complicated pieces of law in, in the state of California. And it's one of those things where it, it's hard not to have conflicting impulses, contradictory impulses. On the one hand, you wanna say, listen, we, we don't, we gotta have somebody who knows all that stuff and understands all the intricacies. On the other hand, you wanna have somebody who's not mired in them. So I think that, um, there are a lot of very serious issues here. The most serious issue, I am inclined to agree with the commission and most of those who've spoken, is that we do need to have leadership, and I actually agree with your statement, Mr. Charlin, that, that we need leadership that the lead are gonna take seriously. We are unfortunately, as I think Mr. Burnson pointed out, we are, or somebody was pointing out, we are stuck with the fact that whatever we do today or next week or next month is, by the nature of the system we're in now, gonna come up for review in a year and a half anyway, or whenever the, the successor mayor gets around to it. So we're, we're caught in this leadership dilemma, no matter what we do. And, and I, um, seconded Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion, uh, out of no reflection at all on Mr. Charlin or on, um, all my concerns about redevelopment, but because I really am very troubled that the search process that was begun was cut off. And it seems to me that, um, more information is always better than less information. I only learned last week that the League of California Cities maintains a roster of, um, uh, former city managers and redevelopment directors who might be available for work. I know a few of them. I don't know whether they're on the roster or not, um, but it does seem to me that's a resource that we should, in the course of our search, have searched. And, um, it, it doesn't appear to be the case that we did, and I may be wrong about that, and I'm sure you'll correct me if I am. So I am anxious to see a search get under, get back underway, um, quickly. And, and I appreciate the problem you've raised with respect to the employees. I think that getting the search underway is a completely separate issue from the question of, uh, how long an extension we put on your contract. No matter what we do, unless we extend you way past, uh, the, the next mayoral election, which I don't think any of us are prepared to do, not way past, um, the, this is, this is an interim, effectively an interim appointment in any case, 'cause it's a, a year and a half till the world changes. There will be, I think, six new council members in a year and a half as well, and probably new agency members at the same time. So, I mean, change is coming, change is upon us. If you're comfortable with the continuance, I agree that we need it here to try to achieve some reasonable consensus, and I will support that motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I think the, based on what I heard today and what's transpired over the past eight months or so, the council has been thoroughly disrespected. They've been ignored. And I think slapping the council members in the face like that caused this kind of discussion that we're having today. Now personally, I don't care how long it stays, as long as it's not past July 1st, 2001. Because I think that's the prerogative of the new mayor, since it's all political. Seemed like it's always been that way. And I made this very same speech at committee level. Now, I don't want to see, uh, the mayor appoints for the next four years or some term where if they have to be let go, then you gotta give them servants' pay and things like that. But if you don't get a contract today, Jerry, you, you're God anyway. You gotta go over and park, box your stuff up. You gonna get 30 days? I don't think so. I would not vote for that because we're just playing games. The fact that matters that, uh, if you're gonna get a contract, you know, being alive with his life, there's hope. And the guy always told me in Sacramento, get what you can get. Today and then tomorrow, you get what you can get tomorrow. But my commitment, you know, whether it's six months, nine, six months later, uh, the year I said you should take, I said in committee, is that right, Nick? I will not vote for another year if it comes back to us because that's put you into the next mayor, but month to month until somebody's selected. I don't think if you start a search today and the person who's number one is gonna wait around for a year. And if they appointed during this term of office of the mayor, then the next mayor's gonna be quite upset about that, especially if they doing business, doing the other, the previous mayor's business, whatever that is, you know, I don't know. It's supposed to be for the good of the city. So my suggestion to you is that, uh, if you can get six months today, fine, you'll get six months tomorrow too. But I, I would like to have the city attorney standing up over there. You're over there? If you don't get a contract today, if he doesn't get a contract, is he outta here yes or no? Is, is he outta here yes or no? Okay, fine. Now, the other part of the contract I don't like is that this service pays six months. Now, if you quit, do you get the six months? Do, if we fire you, you get the six months. Well, if you fire you for cause, then you have to fight for the six months paid. Based on your, so it's your understanding, and this is on tape right now, that, uh, if you are fired for cause, 'cause you're not doing a good job or whatever, then you're not gonna ask for the six months paid. Is that correct? Now, already you're suing us already.
I'm not sure all the elements have been worked out.
Mr. Holden, could you please give him the card of that $35 an hour?
Okay. All right. Now, I, I would say that, uh, I'm not gonna vote for 30 days. I think we're gonna deal with this today. I'm not sure that we have enough votes for the committee report, the way I go around here. I don't think we have that. But I've made a commitment that I, I would, if it's six months, six months, but you're outta here come July 1st, except if the new mayor wants you. If you gone through a process by then, then it's shown to the, the new mayor, new mayor says, I can't pay on this issue, I like this guy, this guy, that guy, fine. Because they, finally, he's gonna be the one to make the decision anyway, uh, he or she. Did I get that right, Ms. Chick? Fine. All right, so now you at least you know where I stand. The first item comes before us. If he gives you an extension, I'm voting aye. Next item, give you an extension, I'm voting aye because I think that's inevitable, whatever it is. But not for 30 days. I mean, this discussion should not take place again.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, Member of the Council, uh, Members of the Council. I would simply say, if in fact it is the will of the body to, um, continue the item, if in fact it is the will of the body to, uh, grant a 30-day extension, uh, I would hereby request that the, um, matter before us, and I've talked with the Chair of Housing and Community Redevelopment on this issue, uh, regarding, uh, impending, um, legal action and so forth pursuant to, uh, action that was taken by the interim administrator and or the board, um, it's quite unusual, um, for something of that significance to take place without Members of the Council knowing about it, particularly if it involves, um, money in any significant way. Uh, I would respectfully request that, uh, between now and when the item is next brought to our attention, the, the city attorney's office, uh, make, uh, Members of the Council aware of it by way of a presentation before the body, and I would so move. Is there a second, Mr. President?
Is there a second on Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, Members of the Council, uh, I wanted to talk about the process, and I think we've done a lot of that today, and, and there's recognition that that process is, is now, uh, before us, uh, and now we're making that decision. And for whatever reasons, my eight years as a councilperson, my experience I've gained here, it has taught me that, that I'm not necessarily the best body to make a decision sometimes. And when I say that, uh, I always ask for some guidance from some other folks who have had a chance to also be part of their decision-making. So I wanna make sure that Mr. Charlin stays on board because my intention was never to terminate the agreement we have and the work he's doing. And so I support the motion for the 30-day extension of his contract because I, I would hate to see him not continue his work. And so I'm supporting that part of the motion, and I'm also supporting the continuance. I would also ask that the CLA's office, in conjunction with the commission, uh, have a chance to review the, the recommendations so that we can ask for a recommendation from our CLA, uh, as part of this process, because we have several proposals on the table. And, and what I wanted to do is allow us to go through the process. I said I was gonna try, it was gonna happen in a compressed atmosphere, and I think that has happened today. And so Wednesday, when the CLA, when we come back to this decision, and there's 15 of us, hopefully the CLA could also be part of that recommendation, and that way it could give us some guidance as to the direction that we're going. Uh, does the CLA have any problem with that? Do the motion makers have any problem with that recommendation? And I would just, let the CLA be, make me prepare to also review the, the choices before us and make a recommendation to the council. Yeah, you can do it, Ron, and that's part of my recommendation.
And then you could ask the county to, to just give us a chart.
Yeah, and, and as we all know, we don't always agree with the CLA, but at the same time, we should hear from him as to what he thinks we should be doing.
Yeah, the chair will recognize Mr. Deaton's, uh, non-response is an affirmative response. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Yes, I'll move the previous question.
Okay.
Point of order, I think. It's, I, I didn't really wanna make a statement. I think it would be helpful to all of us, including the CLA, to have just a list of the various motions that are on the table. That's really all I wanted from the clerk. So that as we're taking the time to, um, try to think this through, um, all the stuff we've been hit with today is available to us. I'm not, I'm not even sure how many there are at this point. There's two or three.
Okay, the clerk, uh, the clerk will review the tape in order to provide that information, Ms. Galanter, by Wednesday. And so at this time, there's a motion to continue the contract, excuse me, to extend the contract 30 days and to continue the item until Wednesday. Okay? Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Question is, uh, move.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, do you have a point of order?
I have a point of order, though.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco, your-
As, um, as articulate as Mr. Ridley Thomas, Councilman Ridley Thomas, uh, was on his motion, uh, the bottom line is, Mr. Councilman Ridley Thomas would like a briefing on the pending lawsuits. My point of order or question to the city attorney is, that type of briefing would be done in open session or in closed session?
Closed session. Close.
Not now, but that's his motion. I just wanna know if it's an open or closed?
I think that would be in closed session.
Okay, so that's, I just wanna make sure that, I think that was the motion he made.
When it comes back to us.
I believe that would occur on Wednesday, Ms. Chick, as part of this entire package. Mr. Ridley Thomas, did you have a point of order in addition to?
Uh, nothing other than to say I thank, uh, Mr. Pacheco for the assist in, uh, clarification.
Thank you. Okay. We do have this item before us, which is again, a 30-day extension of Mr. Charlin's contract with this item continued until Wednesday. Mr. Clerk, would you open up the roll and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, that item is approved. Okay? Next item?
Mr. President, 15D is the Ridley Thomas motion to have the city attorney provide a briefing if 13C passed, and 13C did pass.
Okay. We have Mr. Ridley Thomas's item, 15D, colleagues. Does anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, that was Mr. Ridley Thomas's request to have the city attorney, uh, the agency and the city attorney report on Wednesday. Okay. Did you open up the roll on that item? Tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item?
Next item are closed-session items currently before council.
Okay. I'd like to ask that all persons not party to the closed-session items to please excuse themselves at this time. The council is going to be going into closed session. We have item number 32 before us. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll on item number 32?
Mr. President, uh, item 32 is to authorize city attorney to expend $1,500,000 in settlement of case.
Terrific. Open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Fourth with on that item. Items number 30 and 31 are also closed-session items, which this council will continue until this coming Tuesday, which is the 18th of January. Mr. Clerk, next item.
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear. Do we have adjourning motions, colleagues? Okay, would you all please rise for adjourning motions? Adjourning motions? Mr. Holden?
Uh, Mr. President, Members, it's, it's just sad that we have to introduce such motions under these sets of circumstances. We have, uh, Albert Dyson, uh, former police officer, LAPD. He was graduated from USC with a MS degree in public administration. He was in the Air Force from 1963, 1967 in communications. He attended the Los Angeles Police Academy and joined the county sheriff, where he became a senior deputy and drill sergeant from 68 to 85. In 1992, he became the executive director of PCAC, I think, they call it the Public Access Station. Uh, he, he worked with the LA School District Police and was retired sheriff when he died in an automobile accident, uh, just recently. And, uh, certainly, he's contributed a lot in a time when he should be really enjoying his life. He's, he's not gone. Uh, as President, Members, we also have Andrew Perry, a businessman in my district, a community activist, belonged to a block club for as many years as he's, as of his age almost, uh, just passed away January 10th. And he left his wife, Pearl, and daughters Andrea, Angela, and two brothers and two sisters. Uh, he was well into his 80s, so he will be missed also, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Do we have others? Councilwoman Ms. Sikowski?
I would like the council to adjourn in memory of Jacob Hayman. Jacob, uh, died, uh, Monday at the age of 97 and had been a Los Angeles resident for the last 56 years. He was an independent accountant, uh, and got himself, was very much involved in a lot of his community activities, both at the Wilshire Boulevard Temple and as a member of the Anti-Defamation League, as well as Toastmasters. He was the patriarch of his clan, the Friedman Clan, loved to travel, uh, was a witty speaker, and was very proud of the fact that as a world traveler, he was in China in 1972 when Nixon opened it, and he believes he helped Nixon open it. Uh, he is survived by Jackie Raymond, who's the president of the South Brentwood Homeowners' Association in Brentwood, where he has lived for the last few years, as well as many, many, um, nieces, nephews, and, uh, his son and daughter.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request that the council adjourn in memory of Jesse Cisneros, uh, who was born on July 25th, 1915, in Alhambra, California, uh, and passed away this last January 8th in San Fernando, California. California. She met and married Anastasio Cisneros in 1932, and together they had nine children. I attended the services earlier this week, and one of the stories that was shared that really touched me the most was after she was married, after she began to have her children, as they were raising the family, she went back to night school, and with her kids would do homework, stay up late, and she became a nurse. She was working as a packer for Sun Kissed Oranges, but she became a nurse's aide and worked for many years at Holy Cross Hospital, and then eventually went into business for herself. But they were married for more than 67 years and together had nine children, 30 grandchildren, 48 great-grandchildren, and six great-great-grandchildren, a total of 119 offspring. It was a large family, and a large heart to go along with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll? Thank you. Being no further business before the council, the council is adjourned. We wish everyone a wonderful weekend.